Patty, you're in here twice. You are, but that's okay. Just stay put. You don't need to.
Okay. Yeah, I have two machines.
We had got it on live streaming?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're good. So, yes.
Are you ready, Seth?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, people. Welcome to the Situate Planning Board, Thursday, June 10th, 2021. For those of you that would like to participate, it has to be done by remote access only. So you need to either by computer or by telephone. Go to the website and follow the directions. Okay, at this moment, I will accept a motion for the agenda this evening.
Moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
And just for the record, Mr. Pritchard will be absent from this evening's meeting.
Thank you. All right, the first item is a Form A for 48 to 52 New Driftway. This is, the applicant is Petro Realty Corporation, owner CCO Holdings LLC, Aaron Cutler, I believe. This is the joining two lots together. Unfortunately, when they put the plan together, they didn't put the dotted line down the middle. So we're just joining it all. Karen, do you want to comment on this and tell them what, tell the board what Aaron's up to?
It's, it's just, I mean, you conditioned this part of your special permit that there needed to be a Form A to join the two lots together, to have one lot so that all the buildings, the buildings would properly fit into zoning, et cetera. And so this Form A is what is before you tonight. I would recommend endorsement of it.
Aaron, is there anything that you would like to say? You're muted.
Is that, am I unmuted now? I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any comments from the board? I move to endorse as approval not required, a plan of land at 48 to 52 New Driftway Situate Mass, stamped by Brian J. Murphy, registered land surveyor for applicant Petro Realty Corp. and owner CCO Holdings LLC, dated May 20, 2021, with revisions through May 26, 2021. As the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line which does not alter the existing frontage as required by the Situate zoning bylaw and the plan is showing a combining of two existing lots. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, Ms. Barbine, aye. Ms. Lewis, aye. Mr. McLean, aye. Mr. Bornstein.
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you all. All in favor unanimous. All right, the next item is discussion of surety for 48 to 52 New Driftway Gas Backwards. Okay, Karen?
All right, so Mr. Cutler submitted an estimate for the surety based on the site and the off-site improvements. As the off-site improvements were less than $10,000, I felt it was more appropriate to combine the surety into, I combined it into one surety, even though we conditioned it as two separate. John Chiesa reviewed it. Although there were no quantities, all the, everything looked appropriate. And with a 15% contingency added, I would recommend a surety of 1,705, 705, 200. With the form of surety to be acceptable to the treasurer, collector, and the content acceptable to town council. It's probably going to be a bond.
Okay, I got it. All right. Any questions from the board? I move to require surety for the site plan administrative review special permit.
Wait, what?
Aaron, you have something you want to say?
Yes. So I apologize. Can I just, I'd like to understand the surety just a little bit better right now? Because I was going through it in my head and I asked my contractor to provide it. And, but I was going through it and thinking, so if I, so we're getting surety for all the improvements on the, on the land. And not to say this would ever happen, but what if we decided we didn't want to build it? Would you, would the town somehow be able to step in and decide they want to build it?
No.
So, okay, so how does it? What's the function of it then, I guess?
Surety is there to protect the town. You have a project that had conditions and therefore surety is there to protect the town in case, in case something, there's a liability, in case something happens. The town would never step in and build this development. If the town had to secure the site to leave it in a safe condition, the town would do something like that. But as part of site plan review, we can require surety and we require it on most every project.
I got you.
Okay.
So, and that, and that one, you know, whatever the number is, 1.7, that's a logical stand-in for what the town would need to do to secure the site?
No, I mean, it's way more, but it's based on the estimate for what was in the decision, site improvements, excavation. That was all in the, that was all required to be part of surety.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions? I move to require surety for the site plan administrative review slash special permit, stormwater permit issued by the planning board dated 2/16/2021 for 48 to 52 New Driftway for applicant Petro Realty Corporation to be 1,705,200 based on the applicant's estimate for onsite and offsite improvements, including a 15% contingency as John Chessy of the town's consulting engineer has suggested. The form of surety to be acceptable to the treasurer, collector, and the content, and content acceptable to town council. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous. All in favor?
And then our final item with this is endorsement. Karen?
All right, so you, one of your conditions was for endorsement. And so I have reviewed all the milars and John Chessy has reviewed the milars. Everything that was required is part of the decision to be added is on the plan. So these are a representation of what the plant, of what the board has approved. Then the milars will go, the applicant will take them to the registry of deeds and record them and as part of the special permit.
Any questions?
No.
Aaron, are you all set? Just wave your hand if you're okay. All right. I move the planning board endorse the site plan administrative review special permit in the Green Bush Village Center and Neighborhood District for the proposed gasoline filling station, convenience store and restaurant slash food service at 48 to 52 New Driftway, Situate, Massachusetts, prepared by Chuba Engineering Group PC dated June 23, 2020, with revisions through 5/24/21, consisting of sheets 1 through 13 and a landscape plan and condition sheets C-1 and C-2 for Petro Realty Corp., applicant and owner, CCO Holdings LLC. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Barbine? Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous. All in favor?
Thank you. Okay, Aaron, good luck.
All right, so, planning board, please come in as soon as you can and endorse the sheets because the sooner the planning board comes in, the sooner we can get the milars to Aaron so that he can go get them recorded.
Okay.
Because he would like to be starting construction probably in the next month.
Or tomorrow, right? Good luck, Aaron. Good luck. Thank you. All right, moving along, we have, do we have to wait till 7:30?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, it's a public hearing, so we have to wait. So I would suggest maybe doing liaison reports, meeting minutes.
Who's preaching?
It's us.
All right, approve minutes?
Is that me?
Yes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for March 27, 2021.
May, should be May.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I thought, May 27, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous. All in favor?
All right, next would be accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of $2,677.15 to Horsley Witten for peer review services at Seaside at Situate for $585 to Chessia Consulting for peer review services at 48-52 New Driftway for $390 to Chessia Consulting for peer review services at 18 Ford Place for $458.60 to Chessia Consulting for peer review services at Zero Rear Country Way Residential Compound for $300 to Merrill Corporation for peer review services at 115 Grove Street for $2,100 to Merrill Corporation for peer review services at the residence at Driftway Place for $53.06 to WB Mason for office supplies for $1,725 to Horsley Witten for peer review services at 43 Watch Hill Drive.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Ms. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous. All in favor?
Thank you, Rebecca.
Welcome.
All right, now we have liaison reports. Does anybody have anything that they need to tell us?
No. I will tell you that I was down on 3A today. They started to pour concrete or whatnot at that 40B, what's it called?
Aaron Brook Meadow.
Yep, that's, they're starting to give, moving right along down there.
Boy, that thing's tall, isn't it?
Yep. It is.
Okay. Just a question for Ben. Somebody asked me, what's going on behind your property? Is it you or is it somebody on Stockbridge Row?
That, that's at my property.
And what are you up to?
We, this was before the zoning board of appeals. We are, so there was an existing building that we added a small second floor on and are doing some interior renovations to create
Good for you.
an accessory use because our home office is currently our dining room, so we have no dining room and it's a little tight over here. So we can't find anything else in town that we can afford, so we decided to invest in the property that we have here.
No, and you're not alone in that one. Okay, any other liaisons situations? Right, Karen, planning and development. I think you have quite a laundry list.
I have several things tonight. As of right now, meetings, starting with the next meeting, meetings are going to be in-person for members, applicants, et cetera, unless something happens in the legislature between now and the 15th. We've heard no movement on that topic. So I would plan to be here next, on the 24th. This meeting does start at 6:30 on the 24th. Now, we haven't posted anything for any of the July meetings. Is it the board's pleasure to stay at 6:30 or does the board want to go back to 7, 7 o'clock?
I prefer 6:30. I'd go to 6:00 if I could, but 6:30 works. What about the rest of you? Patty?
I, I'm, I'm open, you know, I, I'm here. It would be up to like Ben, Rebecca, and Steve.
Ben?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, I mean, I think 6:30 is, is, is fine. There might be random times where it's a little tight for me, but on the other hand, you know, dragging it out till 7:00 isn't the best option either. So I'm flexible. I can, I can kind of go either way at this point.
Bob?
I'm good with 6:30. I could do 6:00 also.
All right, well, we won't, Steve wouldn't like that. Rebecca?
I'll, I'll say I can stick with 6:30. I'm like Ben, there might be times when it's a little tight for me, but I prefer getting out, done earlier.
Yes.
Then, so.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
So then, for the first, well, for the first July meeting, we'll, we'll keep it at 6:30. And then, you know, if, next time when Steve is here, we'll, we'll ask him too, what's his opinion? So that we get everybody's opinion and go from there. All right, Seaside at Situate, Hadley Road and Sixth Ave were paved yesterday. So the, they, they owed, under the special permit, a top coat on Hadley Road. And so it was all, you know, ground down and the new top coat is on. And they overlaid Sixth Ave because that's where they put the new drain line in and they, you know, they had to make, you know, they had to make it look nice again. The project is moving along. They are, you know, there's a lot under construction out there. But, you know, things are, I believe there's a temporary occupancy permit for the clubhouse. I don't know the status of the pool. But they're still doing, I have not received any type of final ass built for the clubhouse. So that, that I'll be waiting on. 18 Ford Place is going, is going, that's going well. The house is gone. They're excavating for the foundation. They put some of the drainage already in. So that is moving very, very quickly. Master plan comments are due by Monday. So if you have any comments, please get them to, you know, fill, follow the, the link there and get them to Emily. Right now, she told me she's received 39 comments and she'll be looking at them and will be dealing with that for the next meeting. She will be here on the 24th to give a, to give an update of where we are on the master plan summary. And essentially, the contract ends at the end of this month because we don't, we don't have any money. The master plan should be done. Getting the public comment was the last, was the last portion of it. And then, I think it's desirable, although it's not mandatory, that town meeting approve this. So, you know, we can make that, those decisions on the 24th, whether you want to put it on the town, the fall town meeting for approval by the town. But, I mean, I'm having, I'm having a conference call with Emily on the 22nd. And we're going to go over some of the comments. Anna's going to be available. If anyone else wants to be included, please, please let me know. She said some of the comments were, that she's received so far were, you know, a lot of them were coastal related. One person, you know, said, you know, a notice should have been sent to everybody in the town. But the comments were seeming pretty favorable. You know, there are other issues besides, you know, coast and that, but development. But she, I haven't seen any type of summary yet. So, it's also related to the master plan. The master plan website is going to due to renew at the end of the month. I see no need to keep the master plan website if the master plan is done. The document can be put on the master plan page of the planning board in the town website. And I just, does everyone agree to that?
Yes.
I, I agree with that. Otherwise, it gets almost confusing to have so many things.
Okay. In addition, the two, the next, on the 24th of June, we're going to have two scenic road hearings. One of them is for National Grid. They're proposing to remove a bunch of trees on Old Oak and Bucket Road in Maple Street. So you may just want to drive down Maple Street and Old Oak and Bucket Road. The trees, I know I saw the trees posted today on Maple Street. They, they have a piece of white paper on and they have a little piece of red ta, they have red tape on them too. So you should be able to easily identify the trees. There'll be a list for next time. The senior center, they're still doing the light study. They're working on that. The parking monitoring is due to start plus or minus August 1st. Drew Company is under construction. They're storing reclaimed asphalt at 108 Stockbridge Road and doing trucking, mostly exporting for the next month. They're, they're, they're moving pretty quickly out there as well. They will be working this Saturday. They can start at 8:00 and that's what they're planning to do because it's, they're allowed to. One issue came up today is that, Shari, could you perhaps share the plan? On, the planning board approved, New, Old Driftway is going to be reconstructed, okay? As part of this reconstruction, the, there's going to be, there was going to be parked, there's about 13 parking spaces down, parallel along Old Driftway. Now, one of these is labeled as a handicap spot. Now, DPW and basically the Horsley Witten is saying, the handicap spot doesn't work. It's, it's because you can't, you don't have the width to have the attic, to have it during parallel parking. So I, and that's also the area, a couple of spaces are going to be labeled for morning loading. I would recommend that we not have that handicap parking space there, but they have a handicap parking space right there where Shari is pointing to. That's one required for the project. To the right of that, there's, they have an eight-foot striped area and they could very easily put another handicap parking space up there so that for surface parking, there would be three handicap spaces. And it's a totally ADA accessible route between those parking spaces and the, and the handicap ramps and the front of the, and the front of the buildings. I let them know that, you know, I was, the planning board is meeting tonight and I would discuss it with the board. I think that I would just recommend this as a, as a, as a field change. But what do people think? The town does not want to be responsible for a handicap space not working along the road and have to fix it, you know, after the road is done.
All right, people, I for one think that this makes tremendous sense.
Two.
Rebecca, you agree?
Yep.
Bob?
I agree.
Patty?
Go up, that's fine.
Ben?
Was, I, I can't really remember if we ever really discussed this in our, in the hearings for this project. Was there any rationale for why the handicap spot was included in the parallel parking area?
Well, because everyone thought it would be nice to have a handicap parking space along the street. But it, and that's why it was included. They, you know, went along with it. Now, now
Right.
Final engineering.
But it was just, it was just like, it was just in theory, something nice to have. It wasn't any.
Right. I mean, there is, there is handy, the site is fully ADA compliant. And of course, the MBTA parking is ADA compliant.
Right.
So.
Then I think if anything, yeah, I think it almost, it, it creates, it, it's very going to be onerous for the town and it also creates somewhat of a, a safety hazard. So I, I would agree with making this field change.
All right, so I will, I will get back to Horsley Witten tomorrow and let them know that this field changed, that it, go ahead and do it. There's been some other minor little things that have changed already. South Lane is now, it's 20 feet wide. It's going to have mountable curb at a couple of the tight spots so that there'll be more green space between, between the property line and the adjacent property. So to me, that, that was a win-win situation as well. Other than that, everything is, you know, they're just starting, but things are looking good on that project. And that's kind of all I have on Drew. You know, we continue to have accessory dwellings and formas and we are starting to, we're working on zoning for a fall town meeting. And at some point, we need to finish the stormwater regulations. Right now, it's been, there had been a working group that was doing it. And the last time we met was probably in December of 2019, COVID hit. And so I'm thinking at this point in time, you know, maybe later this summer, I'll get back into it. And I think that I'm just going to send it to the board and we'll have probably maybe one or two informal discussions on it before we have a public hearing. The goal was not to change the whole stormwater stuff to, it was to change it enough to comply with the new, with the bylaw that was passed several years ago. It wasn't to change the bylaw. And so that's what we're trying to do. So it may, it's all going to need to be redone when coastal storm flowage gets added. And I understand from the conservation agent that they're working on standards and things are getting, and the state level, things are getting close for that. So, you know, sometime in the next year or two, we'll be dealing with that. And then, you know, any changes that are needed for the actual bylaw we'll have to do at that time and we can do other changes but for, you know, inland stormwater. Does that make sense to everybody?
That's to me. Ben?
Right. We still, we still have a lot of stormwater permits, you know, to, for compliance, you know, that we, that we do under the, under the stormwater bylaw and regulations. That's, that's kind of all I have at the moment. That's, that's kind of all I have at the moment. I mean, I can try to call Mr. Maribito and see if he is in his office to come on early for 626 CJC. But we can't start the public hearing for, for 129 Stockbridge early. It's, it's a public hearing.
Okay. So.
You want me to try calling Maribito?
Oh, give Paul a call and see what, what he's up to. All right. Is there anything anybody needs to discuss that they'd like to chat about?
No.
Who's doing what, where and to whom?
Nope.
You know, there's been some interesting articles in the Globe about the lack of rental housing on the Vineyard and Nantucket. And it's, it's really becoming very, very difficult. And I've seen it happening here in Situate. I know of one family that has been renting and now the homeowner is selling and they have no place to go. So it's really, it's very sad and I'm not sure how we can think about rectifying that. In one sense, maybe we need to think in terms of more density. I don't know. Has anybody given this any further thought?
Well, I think it's interesting Ian, that they said, I think it's on the Vineyard, there is no multi, uh, housing and there is no density, right?
Right.
That's part of the problem there.
Well, also what's, what's happened is a friend of mine has rented a cottage a week at a time here and there. And the owner of this little camp cottage group sold it to a company. And they're honoring everything for this year, but next year you have to buy in. It's like a timeshare. And then, um, I know the Vineyard voted down. They're going to keep the short-term Airbnbs that some people on the Vineyard wanted to get rid of. So it, it's just, they don't have places for the workers. They don't have, they, they got a real problem.
In Nantucket, somebody actually built housing just for their workers to come and stay seasonally. That's how bad it was two years ago. I mean, I, I don't even know, I mean, if we have housing here, uh, I think part of our problem from an EGC point of view is we don't have any, any, anybody to go to work in those kinds of places that would, that they are spaced with there. I mean, we have restaurants and whatnot, but we are not as dependent, I don't think, on that short-term rental. Um, I, I know I hear constantly people all over town that there are all these Airbnbs that nobody seems to know about. I have no idea, not up here, the west edge, as far as I know, but, I can tell you that I sit on Mata Beach for 35 years. I don't know a soul on that beach anymore. Nobody. It's crazy. There's a lot of turnover down there. And I know the neighbors are not happy, but I don't know how you control that.
Well, years and years ago, um, before Cedar Point was gentrified, if you will, people would rent it through the winter. There were, there were winter rentals, September through the end of school. They were, some of them worked at the shipyard, some of them worked wherever. And then they would decamp to either Wapataut State Park or they go to the, down to Plymouth to the ponds. And they come back in September. But all of that rental, whatever is gone. It's all gone. It's all changed. You, very seldom do you see a seasonal rental anymore here in Situate that I know of.
There's still some.
There are?
Winter rentals?
Yes.
Yeah, there's one. Yeah. Not a lot, but there's still some.
Some, but not a lot.
I mean, I don't know Martha's Vineyards and Nantucket, both of them. They're not going to put dense housing there. I mean, if you buy there, you have to pay a bunch of money into a land bank so that they can buy it more land so it won't be built on.
But now they're thinking about the possibility of having, um, one or two percents fee, if you will, for sales of property over a certain amount of money that would go into, um, an affordable housing bank to try to help out people renting, yet the ones who are against it is the real estate lobby. They don't want that.
I mean, it's very shocking to me that the fire chief does not have a house to live in.
Yes, that's terrible. He has no place to live.
Just his couch and then they're going to get a tent. That's a little disconcerting.
I don't have the answer to that, but it's something, it's becoming increasingly more difficult. And as, as prices go, I mean, everyone here could probably sell their house for a gazillion, but where are we going to go? There's no place to go. I mean, it used, it used to be you would drive in, in order to buy a house until you qualified, which meant you had to go down to Mansfield or wherever. But those prices have gone crazy too. There's no place left unless you want to go to Bedford.
And get a beautiful house there, that's for sure.
Yes, you would. And they're going to, um, extend the rail line down to New Bedford as well. Which makes a lot of sense.
The south coast is beautiful.
Yes, it is. Stunning.
It's a whole state of mind thing that you want to be there. I don't know. What is, but what is the real estate market here? Well, I mean, I know everything is going for over us by like, I don't know, Rebecca, like $50,000, $100,000. Crazy. If I was a younger, hotter woman, I'd sell my house and go tend to a wolf.
A house in my neighborhood went for 150 over ask.
I know, without a view.
And you're a green neighborhood.
You know, a house up the street went, uh, uh, on Cedric went for a million 25. A little gamero. Cause they wanted it. And the person that lost out on that house went to the other one further down the street.
Oh.
It's, um, it's crazy. It's crazy. Somebody sent me a letter asking if you want to sell your house, we have somebody who wants it. Okay. I'd have to relocate my cat. It's not going to happen. All right, we have another 20 minutes that I'm trying to kill here and not being terribly successful. So Ben, what's happening with the shellfish scenario?
What is happening with that?
Uh, no, well, no, the, they, that, I mean, that's going to a trial. It's still in discovery. But they, the town has decided to reject all of the applications so that we are no longer party to the lawsuit because we don't have standing to be litigated against. So we are all, so the, the whole. Yeah, we're off the hook. Um, but on the other hand, the whole, you know, the, the, the Friends of Bassings Beach organization and the town of Situate are still in this drawn out legal battle. It's, it's interesting because a lot of the title on those lands goes back to, you know, the original Plymouth Colony. And it's a very exhaustive, um, title, uh, search and, and, and research that they're, they're having to do. So they have all the big time experts doing that. And, um, it's, I don't know when they're ever going to resolve it, but I don't, I, I, on the other hand, I also haven't heard how the shellfish program is going to continue because we, we could certainly, the town could certainly forge ahead and just not, uh, not engage in the, those pieces of land that are under, you know, litigation right now. But I don't, I don't know what their plan is. I haven't heard anything.
Good to know. Um, anybody with.
How much land could they use?
Uh, the town of Situate?
Yeah.
How much of that land is not in the litigation?
You know, I, I am not exactly sure. It's the Department of Marine Fisheries that, that, and, and the Office of Coastal Zone Management kind of combined that determine the, the usable area for shellfish aquaculture. I want to say it was originally maybe like, there was something like 30 acres or something out there. But then I think the really only usable area might be like 17 acres or something like that. And I'm, I'm not sure the exact square footage of the property in question, but there's still plenty of space out there. I just, I'm not sure if those were the ones that we were kind of, had been planned for at this juncture. So, um, they'll, they'll have to figure it out.
Doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Okay.
There any update from the town on, what is it, well, 19 and the?
It's back online.
They're having?
It's back online.
Is it okay?
Yes. Yep, back online. I'm just trying to figure out where that extra 1 million gallons went the Wednesday before it went down. Yeah, that was a lot. That was unbelievable. Karen, did you get ahold of Mr. Maribito?
No, we haven't got ahold of him.
The one that missed him. Okay. So I have another 17 minutes that we need to, um, what else is there to discuss? We're still waiting. I've heard about, um, the land down on First, uh, First Cliff that CPC had purchased from all of the heirs, McDonald's and what have you, Sunset. And it's still in probate because some of these people had the nerve to pass away. So it had to go to probate. So once it's out of probate, I guess that will happen. And then, um, the Mordecai Lincoln property, I guess they're waiting for purchase and sale agreement. And who knows who's dragging their feet on that one, but that will happen, I am sure. I hope.
So I heard a little chitter chatter about the Boy Scouts. Does anybody know about the Boy Scouts wanting to establish a Boy Scout camp on open space?
News to me.
I think that is a topic of conversation that was on, that Frank Snow was leading. And, um, I don't, I don't know anything about it.
You know, he wants to, I, I don't know where. I want to say it's up on Damon, maybe up here in the west edge. They want to make a camp that they can, you know, put porta potters, latrines and build platforms and whatnot, uh, for five day outings. Um, I didn't even know the Boy Scouts were still in existence. I thought they had forced out by, uh, bad money management. I, I don't know. I don't know that we would, and I don't know how receptive people would be, but I have to tell you, I, I would have a hard time seeing how that would pass after they worked so hard to get that into open space. That's my opinion, but could be swayed either way. But, um, yeah, that's, that's the big news up here in the west edge.
Interesting. Interesting. Have you heard anything Rebecca from the Housing Trust?
No.
No?
Because I haven't. It's like every time they have it, I have something pretty much.
And how, do you know about the charter review?
Uh, that's going. I, yeah.
One page at a time.
One page. No, they're pretty good. We're just going through it again. One last time.
Is that brought to town meeting then? How does that work?
It's going to have to be brought to town meeting is my understanding.
Another interesting thing. Okay. All right.
All right. Does anybody?
I think they missed, they pushed it. Now we're doing once a month, I think, because we didn't have enough time to get it to the other town meeting.
Karen, do you have anything else that we can fill the next 15 minutes with?
No, I mean, I, I, you know, I, like I said, we're, you know, I, I have a contract with Judy Barrett. She's one who did our sign by law, um, to work on the lot shape factor. Um, and I don't have anything back from her yet. But, you know, I'm hoping to get something so that we can, um, really start tackling this this summer. So if people have any thoughts on that, you know, please get me your thoughts so that, you know, when I have some type of meeting with her, I can, you know, talk about, um, some of the thoughts.
We have thoughts.
Well, in peaking off of that, um, Cohasset passed a bylaw, uh, about, uh, block clearing. And I'm trying to get, I, I have the article. I've tried to get to the planning board. They passed a town meeting that you cannot clear more than 70% of a lot in order to do new building. So they also, now they have a large lot plan. It's very, uh, very convoluted about all the stuff you have to add or subtract. If you've got to build quite a large lot. And they passed overwhelmingly, well, more than two thirds of town meeting about, uh, no, no 100% uh, clear, clear, uh, block clearing anymore. So I know that it's a little more difficult over there and the land is a little more spread out, but, um, I think this reaction to what happened on Jerusalem Road and Nicholas Road has really activated the town. And so they don't want any, um, 100% clearing. So, you know, they got it together. They got it all done. So I'm trying to get all of that paperwork and I'll give it to Karen when it's all done.
All right, Karen, um, do you want to talk to us about Zero Country Way? What's going on there? The Merrick property?
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I forgot about that one, didn't I? Um, so, um, I believe that that project will start clearing on Monday. I have a, I've received a bond this week for the $1 million bond per the, um, for the, for the planning board decision. Town Council is on vacation, so Town Council hasn't had the op, opportunity to review it yet. But, um, I, they received street opening permits and curb cut permits. So I think they're good to go. What I indicated to them was if Town Council wants changes, then we'll have to do changes to the bond. We do know that the testing, um, the planning board conditions required testing prior to construction to verify that the assumption that the groundwater was where they said it was. And all that data came out exactly what they thought it was. The soil, there's a pocket in there, as they said during the public hearing, that is very good gravelly soil. And that's where the development is proposed. And so everything is, um, everything checked out with all that. So I would imagine that project will start on Monday. And they wanted to, their schedule had them taking three to four months to get the road in. Then they have to do some more testing. They have to do interim asphalt before they can actually start any of the houses. And their goal was to get it done in the dry period. You know, before, before winter set in. So I think that's probably a go. I drove through Curtis Estates today. There's not much going. And there was a little bit of activity out there, but you know, pretty much, I think all but one lot's been started. They're having, they're having some supply issues with some of the permeable pavement. But, um, it, it seemed pretty quiet out there. They're going to have to, this summer, I would anticipate that they're going to be rebuilding the sidewalk out, um, on and Vinyl Road because they don't want to do that during school time. I have not heard any type of schedule, et cetera, for that. But that, that's, I think they mentioned it last time that was on their radar, um, for, for this summer.
Have they fixed, have they fixed the stone wall yet?
No.
That's been like that for two years.
They say that that is caused by a tree.
Uh, it fell out within two weeks of it being built.
I wonder what I heard. That there's a tree, the child would not let them take down and it keeps knocking the wall over. That's what I heard. So, I don't know.
I don't either. Have to go out and look it out. Look at it. Okay, so, no Paul Maribito, huh?
Uh, let me try calling him again to see if he went to his office.
Yeah, but now we only have nine.
All right, we have another. Seven minutes. Nine?
Nine minutes, Anne.
I know, really. The clock here in the selectmen's office is fast. Very fast. Seven twenty-three, according to the computer. So, anyway.
Any more news on sewer?
No. No. I think Cohasset is going to be, depending upon what they finally figure out, whatever it is they want to do. If, and when the contract comes up again. A home may just shut them off, and I don't know where they're gonna put a hundred thousand gallons every day. Because it won't be going to Hull. That should be more than interesting. And also too, there was a piece in the paper about Hull's schools, and I had mentioned this quite a while ago. That in twenty, twenty-five years ago, they had two thousand students at the high school, and now they're lucky if they have two thousand students. System wide. And their schools are, we wouldn't want to say that they're virtually empty, but they're pretty close. And I think a lot of this came about because. All of the apartments that they built were all two bedrooms. And so it precluded families.
Families.
Yep, it precluded families. So the demographics in Hull have changed. And you end up with retirees and, and what have you. So, no, no Paul?
No, Paul, he's not in his office, so, he's not picking up if he is. So. Sorry, we thought the first items were going to take a little bit longer. We overlooked something.
What? Yes, we were trying to accommodate a member who's out on the west coast, and apparently that didn't work. So here we are with a few more minutes to spare. And was it hot enough for everybody the last few days?
I loved it, but I know most people don't. Ben, did you work?
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Oh, flash, flash, flash.
Yeah, I'm, I'm used to it. It's just not used to it this early in the season usually.
Right.
Well, I was out working in the yard. I know it's hot, but you just have to be careful.
Well, I hope that here in Situate we can get this, you can't clear more than seventy percent because I remember when Wickham Pines was. They went in and they took down every single solitary tree.
I know.
Awful. Awful.
Where is it, Anne?
Where I live.
Wickham Pines, they, Jack had Sealan go in and they took down every tree. And his response was, oh, I was away, I wouldn't have let him do that. And, you know, if you believe that.
Where's Wickham Pines?
Where Patty lives.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I'm still trying to get trees to grow up here. It's almost impossible. It's hot and windy.
Because they took down all the trees.
Yeah.
And they were beautiful, big trees.
I know. Yep.
But it was the forty B.
Is that something the board wants to pursue?
I would.
I, I, I think, I think it's good because, to be honest, what you were bringing up, Anne, earlier about like density and lack of housing and all this. It, it's undeniable that, and you always talk about how you can't prevent change and everything. I mean, how many, what is there, almost eight billion people in the world right now? And New England's a very desirable place to be, and I don't see our population decreasing. At all, or the desire to be or move to this town decreasing at all in the future. So I think that these sort of land alteration, like the way we can control. The, the look and feel of the town is through some of these kind of land alteration and. Kind of like site design bylaws, which like we've done a decent job and with stormwater and, you know, some of this is also in the purview of Conservation Commission. If they have jurisdiction and all this, but I, I think the more we can do towards that is really gonna help. You know, if, if change is coming and density is coming, it will help us. Really keep the character of the town that we all kind of know and love and want to preserve. So, I mean, I, I would wholeheartedly push for something like that myself.
I agree. So make a list, people, of the things that you would like to see happen over the course of the next year. Okay, and we'll see what we can do. I mean, it's not as if we don't have anything to do because we're incredibly busy. Am I correct, Karen?
Yeah, we have a lot under construction at the moment, and it, it does take, it does take a long, a long time to, you know. Coordinate those, make sure everything's running smoothly and et cetera.
And, and one of the things that we're going to see more and more of is marginal property is going to come on with. And this is what we're trying to deal with, those wacky rat tails and just stuff, marginal properties. So if we can try to, to not deny anybody their, their, their rights. Because that's a real issue, but we have to make sure that it's done in a, a more than reasonable way. So I agree with you, Ben. All right, I think, all things considered, we're gonna start. Do we have the people who are necessary for the accessory dwelling at? Let's see, we're at one twenty-nine Stockbridge Road.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and my name is Tracy Sharkey, fourteen West Street. On behalf of the applicant. We did submit revised plans and building plans. I completed the soil testing to verify groundwater. We did the comparison of the existing structure compared to the proposed structure that's on A five of the new plan set. We did revise the driveway. We did not do the turnaround because the applicant thought it was. More detrimental as far as having two exits off of the side road there. And there was a question about the siding. We will be matching the siding of the existing home to the proposed structure.
All right, Tracy, one thing I have to tell you, we only have four voting members here this evening. And this takes a super majority because it is a special permit. Unfortunately, Rebecca, you're recused from this. Is that true?
She didn't do a Mullen, so she can't vote.
Can't vote. Pritchard's not here, so it's the four of us, just for you to be aware in this public hearing, okay? All right, so Karen, do you want to comment on this?
Well, like Ms. Sharkey said, she, she submitted a new site plan. And on it is the test pit data, and the bottom of the infiltrator is three, is more than three feet above groundwater. So that requirement for the Water Resource Protection District has been met. The board at, the board asked that the dwelling, accessory dwelling be moved back by the. Behind, behind the house so that, so that it's not visible from Stockbridge Road. So now the accessory dwelling is, you know, you, you should not be visible from Stockbridge Road. It was also asked for a comparison side by side of the accessory dwelling and the primary dwelling. And that's what's up here right now, with the accessory dwelling being on the left and the primary dwelling being on the right. I did talk to the DPW and the DPW. Doesn't, doesn't have a problem with the circular driveway. They, you know, so at this point in time, they, they don't have a problem with that. They think that it. You know, so that's not gonna be up to the board if you think that the parking looks awkward or the circulation's awkward. DPW did not have a problem with circular driveway. The question before the board is, is this accessory dwelling? Size wise, it meets the criteria, eight hundred twenty-five square feet is thirty-nine point one seven percent of the primary dwelling. Is the accessory dwelling subordinate to the primary dwelling? That's what the, that's the major thing that the board has to decide tonight.
Hey, thank you, Karen. All right, I'll open it up to the board for comments. Ben? Ben, do you have any comments?
Sorry, sorry, I lost you. I was looking at the, the, the site plan on PDF and I got lost and my Zoom got buried. No, I, I mean, I think this is, the new layout is much improved and. Personally, I, I, I think that the, the structure will appear, you know, subordinate to the primary. I, I don't have anything at this, at this point that, that sticks out to me, but I'll wait till further discussion.
All right, Bob?
I don't have any issues with it. It meets the criteria of less than forty percent of the primary dwelling. So as far as like being a subordinate dwelling. Yeah, it fits completely, and that's the only issue that. That I would have with it, so I'm good with it.
Karen?
Well, I think it meets all the bylaws. I think if this was a commercial project, if we set it to design review. I think that there might be some questions. I think aesthetically. It just makes it to be a subordinate house. It looks like two houses to me still. Can't deny for that. I think it's gonna look a little awkward from window lane, and I'm not too sure. I mean, the parking is, whether it's, we cannot make a decision based on aesthetics. But I think it just about makes under forty percent, and I, I'm really leery about keep approving all of these houses that. I mean, to me, it's like eight tenths of a percent underneath for an accessory dwelling. That being said, I can't deny that. Those are just my personal opinions.
And I have to say, I agree with Patty in that the size of this foundation is basically the same size as the foundation for my home. It's, it's a small house. It's really even not that small. And when you compare one, the one on the left to the one on the right, there's not much difference. However. We do encourage and we like to encourage. Accessory dwellings. And for that reason, I still am an advocate and I would like to think, under the circumstances. That the homeowners would consider the circular driveway. As far as I'm concerned, it just makes more sense. And I would be far happier with this if it had a circular driveway. And Ms. Sharkey, will your clients agree to this? Change?
I would say yes. Yes.
Yes, all right. Okay, and since this is a. All right. Public comment, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone out there in Zoland that would like to comment on this?
If you'd like to make a public comment, we can do so at time, this time on the bottom of your screen. If you're on Zoom, you can go to where participants is and raise your hand. If you're participating by phone, you can hit star nine. I don't see any public comment.
All right, so Anne, before you start, Tracy. I just realized I forgot to send you a draft of the motion. So I just emailed you a draft, a draft of it.
Okay.
Okay, so the board, we do draft motions and so I don't, you know, it's just where the board starts. I, I just sent it to you.
Okay. Is there any further comment from the board on this? All right, hearing none. Okay. I move to make the following findings of fact. On February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Kyle and Eunice Siricki applied for a special permit for detached accessory dwelling. On the property at one twenty-nine Stockbridge Road. Two, according to Town of Situate assessor's records and the deed, the property at one twenty-nine Stockbridge Road is owned by Kyle and Eunice Siricki. Sorry about that. Three, the property is in the residential R two zoning district and the Water Resource Protection District. Four, based on a revised floor plan dated five fourteen twenty twenty-one. By the applicant, the floor area of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately eight hundred twenty-five square feet. This is thirty-nine point seventeen percent of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, which is two thousand two hundred ten point seventy-eight square feet, according to the revised plans. The assessor's card indicates the net square footage of the dwelling to be twenty-two thousand one hundred six feet. Based on the assessor's card, the floor area of the accessory dwelling is thirty-nine point seventeen percent of the area of the primary dwelling. And meets the size requirement of five thirty point two F as it is below forty percent. The zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings allows seven hundred fifty square feet of forty percent of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single family home. As it is the size of a small dwelling and its location on the lot is such that it should not be visible from Stockbridge Road. The accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Six, the proposed detached accessory dwelling structure means all required setbacks, building height and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Seven, the proposed accessory dwelling is located on the east side of the primary dwelling. Access will be via a driveway offland delay. No proposed walkways are shown on the plot plan. Eight, the appearance of the accessory dwelling is in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling as the siding for both dwellings would be the same. Nine, the plot plan dated ten eight twenty revised through five twenty-six twenty-one. By guaranteed builders and developers shows a gravel driveway for the existing parking and an area of the existing parking for the proposed parking.
This isn't right. I changed the motion. That, that, this is not right.
Okay.
All right, go, go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, do you want us to stop for a moment and just reprint a new one?
Wait, let me just.
I think that's the same as what you sent me. I was just reading along.
All right, that, that condition's fine. Yeah, keep going with this finding of fact.
All right, near the parking area is dimensioned of the parking air, parking, our show, parking area. Shows that it would be possible to have two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two for the accessory dwelling. With a turnaround area in front of the accessory dwelling, ample parking is provided for the accessory dwelling. Okay. This is part of the findings of fact. Ten, the owners have submitted a signed notarized statement that they occupy and will continue to occupy the residence at one twenty-nine Stockbridge Road. Eleven, the proposed accessory dwelling requires a separate water service with new water connection fees. And cost of new service to be paid by the applicant as indicated by the water division. The applicant will be required to obtain. A sewer connection permit and pay a sewer connection fee for the accessory dwelling as indicated by the sewer division. All requirements of the DPW must be met. Twelve requirements of the fire department will be met for the detached accessory dwelling. Thirteen, stormwater runoff from the roof area of the accessory dwelling. 13, stormwater runoff from the roof area of the accessory dwelling must be recharged on the site to comply with Water Resource Protection District requirements. Infiltrators and their bottom is three feet above the groundwater elevation. The applicant does meet the standards of Situate zoning by law for accessory dwellings on special permit. All right, does anybody have any changes that they want to make on this before we? Number six, Karen. Should that be, um, building height and yard requirements for, uh, should that be an accessory dwelling?
No, because it has to be, it's a freestanding structure. It has to meet all the requirements for primary dwelling. And so it, it does, it meets all the setbacks, it meets the height. So that has to, that's why, that's why it's there.
All right. Okay.
So we'll take a roll call vote for the findings of facts.
I move to ex.
You already moved, so we just need a second.
Second, somebody?
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
And I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at 129 Stockbridge Road with the following conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after a public hearing on 12/17, 15? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform to plot plan for 129 Stockbridge Road by Guaranteed Builders and Developers Inc., dated 10/8/20 with revisions through 5/26/21. 27.6 by 30-foot accessory dwelling for 129 Stockbridge Road by Guaranteed Builders and Developers Inc., dated 5/14/2021, consisting of a cover sheet. Sheets A dash 1, A dash 2, A dash 3, and A dash 4.
And add A dash 5, add A dash 5.
Five? So the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted by the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that they are living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1st yearly. Five, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire and health codes and bylaws. Six, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW water division for the accessory dwelling, including a separate water service for the accessory dwelling with water connection fees. Seven, the sewer connection must meet all the requirements of the DPW sewer division for the accessory dwelling, including payment of an $8,000 sewer connection fee. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on the body. Okay. Any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on the body properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal federal hall or state holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Ten, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be, shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling rooftop must be designed to recharge the first one inch of rainfall with the infiltration, infiltration devices having a three-foot minimum separation between the bottom of the structure and maximum groundwater elevation. Twelve, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sediment, sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk sock shall be used. Thirteen, no finished slope shall be created that exceeds 25% with the exception of the side slopes associated with new road construction. Fourteen, an artificial recharge system for precipitation shall be provided that will not result in the degradation of groundwater quality if the lot is ready to have more than 15% of 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater of impervious soil. And Karen, could we at this point add number 15, that there will be a circular driveway?
Yeah, you can condition it. I mean, unless you could say the applicant is encouraged to provide a circular driveway. The applicant is encouraged to provide a circular driveway and will install it unless the DPW objects to a curb cut permit.
But they've already said that they have no problem with it. Is that correct?
Verbally, yes, but I mean, they'll have to, right, you'll have, right.
Okay. All right, the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board on 12/17/15 shall be conditions of this decision and shall be included for recording at the registry of deeds. A, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the building department, board of health, department of public works, fire department, water department, conservation commission, and other town agencies. B, the property shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, the primary dwelling and the accessory, accessory dwelling as proposed. The footprint, number of bedrooms and or square footage shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. C, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. D, the planning board may require an onsite inspection for conformance to be approved plans and these conditions prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the accessory dwelling. E, an accessory dwelling special permit certification of ownership and occupancy signed by any new owner shall be provided to the planning board within seven days of the closing of the sale of the house. It is recommended that this be signed at the closing. F, anytime at the request of the planning board, the owner shall provide a notarized affidavit indicating that either the primary or accessory unit is owner occupied. G, no on-street parking by the occupants of the primary or accessory dwelling shall be permitted at any time. H, construction vehicles, equipment shall not idle, be parked or stored, loaded or unloaded in the street. I, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of the date of filing with the town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. J, this special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with Mass General laws, chapter 40A, section nine. All right, do we have a second as amended? Don't you ask? Thank you. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Okay. All right, you're all set. Good luck, good luck. Thank you. All right, do we have Mr. Marabey? Oh, he has, he's shown up.
He is, yep.
He's here. All right, we now have a Form A for 626 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Mr. Marabedo, you are on.
I'm just trying to ask him to unmute himself, so just give me a second.
And he is a co-host, so he should be able to, Paul, if you were there, you're gonna take your mouse, you're gonna go to that bottom left-hand corner of your screen where it says unmute. And Paul, you should see an alert that says start your video too. So if you have issues with figuring out where that mute or unbut, unmute button is, you just turn your video on. I'm gonna send this alert to you one more time. It should pop up right on your screen. I, I, I do not have an answer for you. I will say I knew that, that Paul did have some issues in a previous meeting, so.
Well, what do you suggest we do? Because we have to move forward with this.
We'll give him a couple minutes and, you know, hopefully.
Yep, that, and that, you know what, I think, I believe on your agenda, Paul, if you still have that agenda, there is a phone number that you can call in on. Sherri, you put that on there, correct?
Correct.
Yes, so Paul, what you will do is you will hang up here, you will follow the, the dial-in instructions instead. All of you understand that.
He may just not be in front of his computer.
Very true.
We're a little bit early, so. I've asked him to unmute a couple times.
There he is.
Here he is. Hey, Paul.
Well, we still cannot, we still cannot hear him, so Paul, we cannot hear you yet. Paul, 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 I want you to take your mouse. Paul, you're gonna go to the bottom left-hand corner of your Zoom screen. There you go.
There you are. Can you hear us, Paul?
I can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we are here this evening for Form A and our plan. 626 Chief Justice Cushing Highway Assessors Map Block Lot 31-02-11A and B. Applicant owner, Thomas La Perle. All right, Paul. You're on.
Since the last meeting, we, as you know, the plan was withdrawn and we refiled. I spoke to Karen, she sent me an email with some edits she wanted to see on the plan. I did that and I resubmitted the Mylar, so I believe everything's in order. We, um, what, what we did was go out and survey the location of the existing driveway, which is showing on the plan now, and then we also show the proposed easement for the common driveway coming off of Route 3 in the same location as the existing driveway. The only difference, it'll be servicing three lots instead of one. And we added notes to the plan showing that the lots are unbuildable. And we modified note number seven.
Good. All right, Karen?
Um, so Ann, Patty, myself had a face-to-face sit-down meeting with town council. We reviewed the plan with town council, we reviewed the notes with town council. And as Paul indicated, he changed the note to comply with what town council had wanted. All these lots are labeled not, not a buildable lot. And town council believes that we can endorse this plan.
Discussion for members of the board? Rebecca? Not right this moment. Ben?
No, no, sorry, no.
So, Bob?
I have nothing, Dan.
Patty?
Nothing except we're looking at a plan with no buildable lots, just.
Right, at this moment in time, yes. All right, I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in the Town of Situate, Mass. 626 Chief Justice Cushing Highway stamped by Paul Joseph Marabedo, registered land surveyor for applicant slash owner, Thomas La Perle, dated April 28th, 2021, as the division of attractive land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown in the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning by law on a public way of Chief Justice Cushing Highway. And the lots have been labeled not buildable lots. The notes clarify that the lots are not buildable until and unless the planning board issues a special permit for a common driveway. Access for the common driveway is proposed at the existing driveway. Planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to the conformance with zoning regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. McLean? Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
You're all set, Paul.
Hey, thank you, Ann.
Welcome.
Good evening.
You too, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, guys.
We're good.
We're good. And we're done. Anybody have anything else? Karen will be on vacation next week and we hope that she has a wonderful, hopefully relaxing vacation. Yes, Karen.
I hope so.
You better. I hope so. Yes. All right, guys, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yep.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes, aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
And hopefully next time we'll be off the line. We'll all be live, guys, next time.